People have left, so we should probably get through this list quicker. Is Brian McGlynn here? Bill Gerlach. We're just gonna shut off the fan, because I can't hear a thing. Okay. Go ahead, Bill. Yes. Is there a button in front of you?
I'm right up there. There we go. All right. Bill Gerlach, 506 King Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Having previously served on the council, I have a unique appreciation for what you are faced with this evening. It's difficult, but necessary. As I stated in my letter to you dated April 23rd, I do not support this type of development in this particular location. Rather, I would encourage the council, the town administrator, and other town entities to continue pursuit of economic development activities that are not only more in line with the unique character of the town and heritage of the town, but also leverage existing development assets. As such, I do not support and would strongly encourage and urge the council to also not support the proposed changes to the comprehensive community plan as recommended by the planning board in support of the Carpionato proposal. Having been on the council when the Carpionato group first put forth their concept and initial plans, I've seen how this development has morphed and changed over the past several years, each time the Carpionato group inching their proverbial foot more and more in the door of the town. These latest plans reported on recently by our local media whereby the Carpionato group are requiring, requesting significant changes to the size and scope of the development are extremely troubling. Broadly speaking, this apparent bait and switch should stop the development in its tracks, lending themselves once again to the true nature of things. In closing, I'd like to once again draw upon my letter dated from April and ask the council, what is Tiverton worth to you? Its location along the Secanet, its innate geography and natural beauty that offers respite to locals and visitors alike, the fact that we don't have to drive by or look at big box development on our way to work, home, errands, or play, the significance of a place so steeped in history that we have the honor of calling it home, the solace that each of us finds in our own special way by living here. At the end of the day, we often focus on what it costs to live here, but when you reframe that to consider what it is worth to each and every one of us to call Tiverton home, and frankly, why so many people come to visit, you begin to see that a development of this size, scale, and location of Tiverton Glen is not compatible with what we hold so dear. The fiscal problems at Tiverton are real, but so are the alternative solutions. This development is not worth selling Tiverton's soul for, and I urge you to not allow these changes to the comprehensive community plan to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Russ Smith, Alfred Cameron, and Tom Ramatowski. Russ? I did see him here, but I think he's left. Alfred Cameron.
Thank you. My name is Alfred Cameron. I live at Nine Fairway. I've been there for 43 years. I have three children that have attended this school. I have two grandchildren that have attended this school. They all graduated. They all went on to college. Tiverton, I take my hat off to, but don't change it. I am deeply against changing the comprehensive plan. It's not the town that I was the dream when I built my house here. And if the council will go with me, I'll keep voting for them. If not, I'll vote against them. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Ramatowski.
Tom Ramatowski, 17 Bodwin Road in Tiverton. I'm opposed to the changes proposed to both the comp plan and the zoning plan. Our comp plan stresses the fact that we need to preserve the rural integrity of Tiverton and to maintain its scale and its character, the small scale and character of the town. The size and the scope of what's being proposed far exceeds any reasonable limits for a town our size, and I think will inevitably lead to major, major problems. Just a few of the things that would change our rural integrity would be water usage. We have no real evidence that we can handle this from a water perspective, and what will it do to our bills? The amount of paving. Do the math. See how much impermeable surface is being converted to, I mean, permeable is being converted to impermeable. Blasting, we've already had trouble with blasting. There's a lot of blasting to be done here. Just the traffic alone will destroy any of the small-town character and rural integrity that we want. And then there's the issue of the destruction of the historic district as well. So, for all these reasons, I'm opposed. But I want to make it clear, I'm not opposed to development in general, but this particular development is just so large and out of scale for our town that it can't be built even as envisioned without significant changes to our plans, the town's view as to what should be done and how development should occur. A considerable amount of discussion and thought has gone into writing these governing documents like the comprehensive plan, and I'm strongly opposed to altering those documents to allow specific projects to occur that otherwise could not proceed. Instead, I believe developers should look to these documents as guidance for what could and should be done according to the people, rather than as a series of obstacles to be altered or removed to allow their particular vision to be built. The comprehensive plan was written to guide the development of the entire town, and changes made for a specific project can have unintended negative consequences elsewhere within the town that we haven't even thought of yet. So I implore you not to make the changes for those reasons. We only get one chance to develop our town right, so let's do it right. Let's stick to the documents that we have that have had all this review by the state, by a lot of people in town, and not make knee-jerk reactions to allow specific developers to propose everything that they want. I think the vast majority of people who live in this town came here because of its scenic beauty, the rural nature. They knew what they were getting when they moved here, and this is going to destroy that, at least for the middle of the town and probably for what's left of any of that towards the north end. So I implore you to make a decision on this matter that will preserve these unique qualities of Tiverton, because once it's gone and once we lose it, we're not going to be able to get it back. Thank you.
Timothy O'Conneek. Carolyn O'Conneek. Tracy Stroll. Cecil Leonard. Matthew Crutch. Cratch.
My name is Tracy Stroll, 62 Middle Avenue in Tiverton. I just wanted to say that I am against the mega-development and the comprehensive changes. Excuse me.
That's okay.
I have to say, I care about this enough to get over my horrible stage fright, but I don't agree with the changes, and I don't think you should make changes to the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cecil Leonard. You're Matthew.
Timothy.
Oh, Timothy. Okay, go ahead.
Timothy Conneek, 15 Salisbury Street in Tiverton. I would respectfully ask that you use your vote to protect the rural character of our town. Making these proposed changes to the comp plan will, in my opinion, destroy the character of Tiverton. You can call it a mall, you can call it a mega-development plaza, call it a large-scale mixed development, I call it disaster for a small town.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name's Caroline Conneek. I live on 15 Salisbury Street here in Tiverton. And as one of the younger voters in the audience, I can say, you know, I enjoy shopping, I enjoy going out to eat, I enjoy just places where I can meet with friends and family and have a good time. But there's plenty of places in Tiverton right now where I can do that without having to destroy lots of natural land and just cause all these problems that everyone who's spoken already has already discussed. And I have no complaints about this town right now, and I don't think that this town needs to be changed, and I don't think that this comp plan needs to be changed either. So I would respectfully ask you all to please take everything we've said tonight into consideration because we rely on you, like all elected officials, to represent us and put your own personal feelings aside and do what's best for your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecil Leonard, and the next would be Matthew Crutch. Cratch, maybe. Celeste Fernando. Sue Thaler-Crummers. Cecil.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I have several points I want to make. Firstly, I agree with a lot of the points that have already been made, so will not repeat them. Like many people here tonight, I have heard persistent rumors that a back-room deal has already been cut, and regardless of what is said here tonight, the deal is done. I sincerely, sincerely hope that is not true. If it is true, I want to say shame on the people involved. Further, further, if it is true, I hope to see those involved join other Rhode Island politicians in federal prison very soon. Now, to some other points.
Please, please, we can't hear them.
Despite what the agenda said, what really is on the agenda tonight is quality of life Proposed community plan changes would have ramifications for the next 20 or 30 years, and it would change the nature of our community beyond what anybody can anticipate at this moment. More to process, I am one of the members of the, I can't even talk. I'm one of the members appointed by the council to help update the comprehensive plan. So I have to say, I'm very puzzled how we can have this process going on when the work of myself and, more importantly, many other people have been going on for months, and we've suddenly said, "Well, we don't care what the committee we appointed says, we're going to respond to an outside developer." To me, that's totally illogical. State law governing the development of a comprehensive plan states clearly that public input should be sought. Nowhere in the guidelines from the state does it say input from out-of-town developers should be sought. So the process seems to be totally backwards. A little bit of detail, the proposed language again violates the guidelines that the states give. The state guidelines say that comprehensive plan elements should be broad in nature. If you look at what has been proposed, it's very specific down to street, plot, lot, et cetera. That just is not part of what would pass muster at a state level. Only a couple more points before my three minutes are up.
They're up, but I'm gonna let you speak a little longer.
The developer earlier tonight said that part of the motivation for this proposal was tax revenue. Based on information that's been made available so far, that's totally not true. And I can wax more eloquent about that, but it's just not true, and any reasonable person that's looked at the documentation knows that. My last point is, since public hearings are such that audience members can propose changes, I have a proposed change to element 10 of the comprehensive plan, and I will read it slowly. I think element 10 should start out, and I quote, "Seek to develop enterprises that fit into the size and character of Tiverton while being commercially and environmentally sustainable in order to make a long-term positive net contribution to Tiverton tax revenue, as well as offering some living wage employment for Tiverton residents." Now, I think if you want to change the plan, I would highly recommend that change. I absolutely oppose the process that has been going on, and I oppose the way that this is structured to favor a single developer. And even though everybody says they're separate, everybody in this room knows that's not true. Thank you very much.
Cecil. Cecil. Cecil, could you submit that to Nancy, what you just proposed? Matthew Crutch. Celeste Fernando. Susan Thea. Kramer's. Is Matthew here? No. Celeste?
Hello, I'm Celeste Ferindo, 3731 Old Main Road in Tiverton. I moved here a year and a half ago because I fell in love with this town. And I moved here from New Jersey, the mall capital of the world. And I can tell you that if it's got dozens of acres of asphalt and stores, it is not a Glen, it's a mall. I have--
Please, let her speak, so we can hear her.
Over 60 years, I have watched New Jersey be destroyed by malls, town by town, and I moved several times. And every time a mall came in, it brought with it low-paying, minimum-wage jobs on which people couldn't live, which put a bigger burden on the people in the town, the taxpayers. We had the second-highest taxes in the nation for all the time that I lived there. And I just went online to check, and CBS has just declared New Jersey number one with more malls than anybody. I am appalled that you are willing to change the comprehensive plan that made this town the way it is. Because when I came here, I not only found a beautiful place to live, I found community. I've worked at the Library Association, I'm working against this mall. I love this place, and you are about to destroy it, and I don't think any one of you on this board has the experience that, for instance, Ashley has with town planning, of something this large and the effects that it is going to cause on your town. Minimum-wage jobs are not going to save you, and giving a rich person tax breaks that you won't give to people whose homes are being foreclosed on-- I also very much don't like the fact that this vote is in the hands of the likes of a man who brings artillery to a public election at a high school.
All right, all right, that'll stop. That's enough.
Is that my three minutes? I'm sorry.
All right, stop it, everyone. Stop it.
I have the right--
Wait, one second.
--to say that if he's opposing someone who has the knowledge, like Ashley, at least he should have the knowledge to back up what he's saying. This is an endeavor that is going to destroy the nature of this town, and I know that firsthand because I've seen it over and over. Please, you need to vote, you have no right to vote against the wishes of 1,500 people who you represent. And if you do, there will be repercussions for you.
I'm not sure, but I think that's a threat. All right, everybody needs to stop right now, and we need to continue this, and not threaten the town council, because that could be construed as a threat. All right, the next will be Sue Thea-Crummers. You know, I don't know how you expect us to behave when you're behaving that towards us. So please, let's, please, try.
Let's all be quiet so that we can hear, they can hear, and we can get finished with this meeting. Wait till I finish speaking, I'm just gonna reiterate things that have already been said, but I think that we have to keep saying them to make sure that they stick and are remembered when the voting time comes. Thanks for your cooperation.
Thank you.
I'm Sue Thea-Crummers. I live at 69 Quit Lane. I've lived here for 30 years. My kids grew up here. My husband and I love it. My kids love this town, and my friends love this town. That's why we're all here. There's been a lot of innuendo regarding this. There's been a lot of innuendo about the town council. I think Cecil has taken the wind out of my sails with his statement, but it's been said many, many times that you have already made up your minds, you have the vote, and that vote is going through no matter what we say here in front of you today. I find that appalling, and I will reiterate what Cecil says. If that's the way it is, then shame on you for being our voted representatives to help our town do the best that it can. I additionally, as Cecil said, find it very odd that you would actually hold this meeting when you have yet to hear the full recommendations of your ad hoc committee about the comprehensive plan. They have vetted this, and there is nothing else in the discussion of this mall that has been vetted appropriately. We have no signed documentation. We have nothing that's legally binding, and there is nothing that will protect us, the town of Tiverton. Why are we catering to a developer with a somewhat less-than-stellar reputation? There are multiple litigations that are in, you can Google them online, from towns within which they have developed malls, from town planning councils, and from the DEM. We don't need to deal with those in this town. We want a developer that has the same vision that we do. We want to work together as a townspeople, as a community, to tell a developer what we want as a new town center. We do not need somebody to tell us what it should be when, in the next 10 years, nobody's going to go to a mall. Every 20-year-old shops online. Every 30-year-old who's too busy to shop because they have young kids shops online as well. It will be a dead center. We want something that's vibrant, welcoming, and a home to our families. Large-scale development, which you all think is going to help you and has a tax base, will not. Ask Wes Warwick, ask Warwick, ask Johnston, ask Pawtucket, ask Cranston, and many other towns within the state who all have higher tax rates than we do. It is not a tax helper. There will be increases in car insurance rates for every person in the 02878 zip code. There will be devaluation of surrounding property and therefore loss of tax base. Additionally, there will be higher incidences because of the proposed mall of automobile accidents, of small crimes, and that will then increase taxes for the homeowners in the area. This is not what Tiverton needs. Such comp plan changes can also allow other developers to have the same ability to propose a mega-development and have it successfully pass through the same steps we have been going through for the last two years. Once you open the floodgates, it's very hard to shut them. Please do not vote for this.
Your time is up, so could you--
I just have two more sentences. I, for one, would much rather see open space like the 64-acre Pardon Gray Preserve, which looks beautiful and is the same size as this proposed mega-development, and it does not stress the taxpayers. So please, let's all work together to make our town beautiful, welcoming, warm, and a home for all of our townspeople. You are our representatives, that is your charge.
Thank you. Catherine Lovo. Catherine Lovo. Danielle Dureen. Carol Herman. And Debbie Pollis. Catherine, is she here?
I'm coming here tonight on behalf of the Tiverton Four Corners Merchants Association, and I just wanted to read a little statement that we put together. Let's see. In a recent poll, our membership concluded that we, as a collective group, strongly oppose the Tiverton Glen Project. We believe that the town of Tiverton should be following the adopted comprehensive plan, not considering amending it. In 2012, the town council proposed modifications to the Tiverton Four Corners zoning district in an effort to legitimize existing business by changing zoning designations from residential to allow for mixed commercial and residential use. This proposal, which was entirely consistent with the comprehensive plan, was opposed by a very small group of neighbors who want residential zoning to overrule existing commercial enterprises. The residential zoning designations created many legal but non-conforming uses which threaten existing businesses. The town of Tiverton doesn't recognize and legitimize many of the existing businesses in operation today. We find the idea that a large-scale mall project, which requires not only amending zoning, but also changes to the comprehensive plan, upsetting, insulting to current businesses, and shortsighted. The town of Tiverton is willing to embrace and focus on this large-scale project, which clearly isn't consistent with the comprehensive plan. The town hasn't effectively managed zoning that would encourage existing businesses and encourage new businesses that work within the guidelines of the comprehensive plan. The town appears to be at a crossroads concerning taxes and creating new streams of income. We, as small-business owners, understand the need to be creative, future-thinking, and intelligent about any changes to the comprehensive plan, but we would encourage the town to focus on growing small-scale businesses that are the cornerstone of our beautiful town. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Dureen. Carol, I think Daniel was before you, but it's up to him. Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
Good evening. The mixed-use--
Carol, your address, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me. Carol Herman, 1106 Main Road. The mixed-use development district being considered tonight should be rejected because it is exactly the type of development our comprehensive plan says does not belong in Tiverton. The mixed-use district will primarily serve regional needs, not local ones as called for in the comp plan, and will provide the town with minimal economic benefits. Big-box stores are designed to draw customers from a large geographic area. The larger the big box, the larger the geographic area, and the heavier the volume of traffic it attracts. Our current zoning caps the size of a single store at 40,000 square feet. The developer wants a 130,000-square-foot store, the equivalent of roughly three acres. Net tax benefits from big-box stores are often minimal due to the cost of providing public services and because they hurt existing small businesses. Local retailers put more of their money back into our local community. They buy goods and services locally, they bank locally, and they support local community programs and organizations. They care about our community. We would lose the unique small businesses we cherish and see them replaced by Town Fair Tire, Sleepies, Staples, Stop &amp; Shop, Petco, and Supercuts, all of them among Carpionato's most frequent retail tenants. We stand to lose our unique character and our quality of life for a very small, if any, economic benefit. The mixed-use district will also destroy Tiverton's natural environment, as well as its unique small-town character and historic resources, all of which conflicts with our comprehensive plan. The neighborhood-- The neighborhood of this proposed mixed-use district has open land, mature trees, scenic views, stone walls, historic buildings, and wildlife. It embodies Tiverton's rural character. These would be replaced by ugly concrete structures surrounded by huge asphalt parking lots. This mixed-use district would be a source of water, light, air, and noise pollution that is unprecedented in our town. Equally disturbing would be the loss of the Osborne-Bennett Historic District, an irreplaceable part of our local heritage. Construction of a mixed-use district would lead to the loss of almost two-thirds of the district as the former agricultural fields are paved over. The district would be left so defaced that it would no longer meet the criteria for inclusion on the National Register of Historic Places. Creating a mixed-use development as proposed would serve only the priorities and interests of the Carpionato Group. Tiverton residents have the right to determine what new development in town should look like, and this ain't it. Represent our interests and vote no.
Thank you, Carol. The next speakers would be Deb Pollish, Chris Clowden, and Richard Mayoza.
Pardon me and good evening, Madam Chairwoman, I'm addressing the city council as well as the entire audience through the chair?
Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Dan Darren, first name is Daniel, middle initial J as in Juliette, last name is Darren, no one can spell it. D as in Delta, E as in Echo, R as in Romeo, E as in Echo, and N as in November. Forty years ago this August, my wife, who had a very long Italian name that no one could pronounce or spell, married me, I only had five letters. No one can pronounce or spell Darren either. My people happen to be Polish, and her people are Italian, so we got all the consonants and they got all the vowels, it's a match made in heaven, if you will.
Could we have your address, please? I don't think you gave us your address.
Oh, 1542 Main Road, and I don't, because I've not been here before, ma'am, may I ask your name and address as well?
Denise DiMaderis, 55 Kevin Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Most courteous of you. Well, we hold these truths to be, well, I'm sorry about that, that's Fourth of July, and that's long past. I'm a bit of a newbie in this town, just like the lady who spoke previously, I'm on the long side of sixty, long and tooth, as they say, in the horse trade. So, I'm a bit of a naive user, as they say in the IT world. Naive users can ask questions that perhaps no one else has thought of, because they know how things work and how they don't work. I was gratified to hear from the gentleman representing the developer, how warm and fuzzy the relations he had had, and how well he thought about the representatives of the town, and that gave me a very good warm and fuzzy feeling, because, gosh, wouldn't we all like to have warm and fuzzy relationships with our...
Sir, could you please address the comp plan?
Well, actually, that's exactly what I am addressing, ma'am. We'd all like to have those kinds of warm and fuzzy relationships with our representatives. If I might, bear with me, I'd like to tell a little bit of a story, I understand I only have three minutes, but if you'll bear with me, I think you'll see where I'm going. Round about the year 2000, I came into an older car, call a 1988 Delta 88. It had a Landau roof, and in order to replace the windshield, which in New England weather got cracked from time to time, we went to Giant Glass, and they replaced it, but they said they had to take the roof off, it had one of these Landau roofs. So, the second or third time it happened, my mechanic said, "We know somebody in town who can replace that, and you won't have to have the roof taken off." And I said, "Gee, that's fantastic," I trusted my mechanic. So, I went to these folks, and they indeed changed the windshield, they said, "It's all set, all glued down, roof's all set," and didn't have to take the roof off, no problem. So, I drove to work, and I was about five miles away from home, going up and down hills, and I heard this big clunk, and looked up, and in the rearview mirror I could see the Landau roof sailing up in the sky and coming to rest on the side of the road. So, I pulled over, turned around...
Please wrap it up, your thirty, your three minutes is almost over.
Okay. I'll be brief then. I pulled over to the side of the road, attempted to put the roof back on the car, was not able to do so. Town police officer stopped and said, you know, "Are you okay, what's going on?" And I said, "My roof blew off." She said, "Do you have any rope?" I said, "No." She said, "Can we look in your trunk, no bodies in there?" I said, "No, but no rope either."
Sir, you need to, sir.
I'm almost finished, ma'am.
No, I think you really need to talk, we got in the comp plan.
But, Madam President, we all wanna know the end of this story. So, please, let him continue.
Absolutely. So, the police officer said, "Can you get the roof in the car?" And I said, "I tried that already." So, she said, "Let's put it on top." I said, "It's not gonna stay on." She said, "We don't have any ropes." State trooper stopped by to back up, "Everything okay?" His roof blew off, he drove off laughing. At which point, the lady police officer, town police officer, said, "Hang on a second," went back to her trunk and got this big spool of yellow police line tape, and said, "We're gonna tie that sucker on." So, they looped the plastic police line tape around and around the car, and knotted it off, and she said, "You're okay to go on your way." And I went to open the door, and I realized we'd tied the door closed. At which point, the police officer across the street just about fell out of the car, peeing in her pants, and said, "I don't think we thought this out too well." I will leave you with that, as well as one last closing comment. I do understand that Tiverton used to have town meeting. I came from a town in Massachusetts that had a proud tradition of town meeting, going back to 1635. To me, this looks like spot zoning, and apparently, the gentleman before said that you could offer amendments from the floor here. So, I would offer, as I would in town meeting, the following amendment, that the town council indefinitely move to indefinitely postpone any action on this motion to proceed, presuming a whole lot more investigation. And if that were not to be the case, it would seem to me it's time to go back to town meeting, because we're not being adequately represented otherwise. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna stop this. Deb, um, you wanna wait? Okay.
My name is, my name is Richard Mayoza, I live at 55 Ortupper Avenue. I've been in the town for over thirty years, my children, my son, my daughter, graduated from high school, and I have to say, it's a beautiful town, there's no doubt about that. I'm not gonna be directly affected by this particular development, but I do live one mile from the proposed casino. I wanna say that I'm definitely for Tiverton Glen.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, I don't think anyone heard you.
I said, "I'm for Tiverton Glen."
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
The reason I say that, the reason I say that, and with a caveat, with a caveat. When my kids were growing up, they went to part-time jobs in town for, they had to work in Dartmouth, and Swansea, and all kinds of other places, I mean, so, some of these jobs, some of these jobs would be helpful to the town. I go to Chapel Hill with my wife, once a month. I go there because I love Omaha Steaks and their products, that's one of the stars that are there. I like the ice cream, it's Cone Stole, Stone Creamery. I love the fact that I can go to Johnny Rockets, and Bonefish, and Bonefish...
Stop! This is what I'm saying, someone is offering a different opinion, but he's allowed to.
I wanna say what I wanna say. I normally watch, I normally watch this at home, because I am completely deaf in my right ear, and I only have thirty percent hearing in my left ear, and I have a hearing aid there. So, I appreciate that, if you guys could just hear me out. I go to Bonefish Grill. My wife loves Alex Adani. Alex Adani has their corporate headquarters there, and they have a major store there and a cafe. The type of development that these gentlemen put together, in my opinion, is excellent. However, however, this particular development for this town needs to be more tailored to this town. You gentlemen have a gem in your hand. I've been in sales, I've traveled all over this country, in my car. There are a whole lot of developments where they conform much better to the towns itself than this one. And let me also say, because I could be bought a lot of comments that were out here tonight, these gentlemen are not investing money so they can have empty stores. They're in business, they're gonna fill those stores, or they're gonna, they're gonna lose money. I mean, I've owned a multi-billion-dollar business, I'm talking from experience, okay? So, let's not sell them short, let's not sell them short on that pot, please. And you don't speak, I've heard people here talk about speaking for everybody in the town. No, you don't speak for everybody in the town, you speak for yourself, you might speak for somebody who's legally allowed you to speak for them, but you don't speak for everybody in the town. But again, I'm not for this particular audience, but I am for Tiverton Glen, and I wanna encourage you gentlemen to work with this town, because you have a gem. That property has been emptied for thirty-two years that I've been in this city, this town, thirty-two years, and I'm gonna tell you right now, it's gonna be empty for another thirty-two years.
Sir.
That's okay. That's okay, but my children have to work in Boston, in Attleboro.
Sir, just wrap it up, please.
There's no place for them to work here.
Sir, just wrap it up, please, you're three...
There's no place for them to work here.
I just said that, thank you.
So, again, I'm for Tiverton Glen, but not this particular proposal. And gentlemen, please, please, you have a gem here, do it the way we would like it, you're gonna make yourselves a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Deb Pollish.
Good evening, everyone, I'll keep it brief, I know you're hot up there. Deb Pollish, 432 Lake Road. I'm going to reiterate the objection I had with the planning board, and that is of the process. We have an ad hoc committee that has been put together, that held charrettes all last summer, asking the residents of Tiverton what they wanted our comprehensive plan to be and to say. I was at one of those meetings. Now, I have heard, oh, they weren't that well-attended. Okay, I was at a planning board meeting, where it was a hearing for the comprehensive community plan, there were probably over a hundred people. I heard, "That's not enough people." There were over six hundred people here tonight, I'd venture to say, maybe ten, the two that spoke, maybe a few other, are for these changes. I'm not sure at what point there's enough residents, there's fifteen hundred signatures, there's over three dozen businesses that have said, "This is not the type of changes that we want for our comprehensive plan," and I'm just not sure, how large of an audience do you need before you're gonna listen to the majority say, "This isn't what we want?" And I present to you that the majority does not want these changes to this comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Tony Rich, Dennis Ambroso, Ambrose, sorry, Dawn Cabral-Crimbley. All right, Dirk Kermers, someone's coming.
Dirk Kermers, 60 Nonquit Lane, in Tiverton. I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to remind you that you are representing the people of Tiverton, and many of which are behind me here tonight, and I don't know if you've got the hint, but there's very little support for this plan. And since you are representing us, I would like to ask you to, you know, since we are not, it doesn't look like we're gonna get to a vote tonight, so, for the benefit of the town, or the people that you represent, could you just, at this point, state where your intentions are to vote in this matter?
I don't think that that's appropriate, this part, we still need to listen to everyone, I think some of us need to listen to everyone who wants to speak before, before we make the decision. It's only fair.
Then give us some indication of where the town council stands in rep...
I don't think we know that as of yet, and we haven't heard from all the people. I can speak, if anyone on the town council would like to say something, but at this point, I think we need to hear from still all the people on this list.
All right.
Madam President, if I may, just as a matter of procedure, that the public hearing is still open, so that should conclude and be closed prior to any deliberations by the council.
All right, now, this amendment to the comprehensive plan is, in effect, a contract with the Carpionato Group. With this contract, the town incurs the obligation to maintain and support this infrastructure. The obligations on the side of the Carpionato Group would be very, very small, in fact, they have a tax exempt for the first six years of, after we, after this plan is passed. So, the only redeeming value that this plan might have is bringing in money into this town is pretty minimal. So, therefore, I urge you strongly to not change the comprehensive plan, and if you do so, I feel that you will have failed the people of Tiverton. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, Dawn Cabral-Crimbley, 24 Alicia Circle. I just wanna state that I am against the changes to this, to the comprehensive plan. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a homeowner, I've lived in town all my life, so far. I own horses on four acres of land, I like the rural character of this town. These changes will have a detrimental effect to the rural character of our town. I like telling people that we don't have a McDonald's in town, there's something nice about that. I feel that this will impact our local business, especially, we already have a number of empty buildings on Main Road, between Souza Road and Fall River, and I urge you to vote this down, and to listen to what you've heard so far tonight, and not allow Tiverton to become like Westport, where there are lots of businesses, there are some nice sections of Westport, but there are also Route Six through Westport. This is making our town look more urban than a rural community, and I urge you to not allow these changes to happen. Thank you.
Rebecca Lee Dorina Labot, Labat. Is Rebecca Lee here? No. Are you Dorina? Dorina's not here. Lilian Star Maderis, oh, wait a minute, someone's coming.
I think it was my name that you called, Labanti?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Dorana Labanti.
Okay, I couldn't...
I live at 22 Montgomery Street, in, here in Tiverton. I've lived here fifty-four years in August. Now, if I had wanted to have the joy of living next to a mall, I would be over on Font's Corner Road or Swansea Mall Drive. I am not. I'm staying here in Tiverton, and I would think that the majority here have spoken, and I would also think that the town council and the suits over here would get the picture. So, no, I am vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Star Maderis, and I've lived in this town for fifty-four years, just like this lady, and I love it, and I would ask you to please consider the fact that our town needs to stay the way it is, and that we need, maybe this young lady over here, we need to hire her to help us to plan our town. Please vote no. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I have to take a break, because we have to change the tape and the camera, but it's ten o'clock. Does any of the council wish to continue this, or continue for how much longer? It is ten o'clock, and I have, I have like twenty-eight.
My motion would be...
Put yourself on.
My motion would be that we continue until the, until this public meeting is ended, and everybody has had the opportunity to speak. I don't wanna drag this out for another night.
Well, we'll probably, what I would propose is to let everyone speak, and then recess it to another night, where we would have a town council discussion and a vote, and then the town council can go home, digest... town council can go home, digest what they're hearing, and then vote at the next meeting, which we already have scheduled. But...
I would, at the very least, be willing to stay until we've heard everyone from the public, and then maybe we make a decision at what time that is to proceed or not.
Okay, at this point, that's what we'll do. We'll hear from everyone from the public, but I do have to take a break for five minutes or so.
Madam President, just for a clarification, that I would say that we need to have a vote on the motion that's currently before to extend.
Well, it's not a motion to stop, which means we're going to continue.
All right. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor of...
Hang on, hang on.
The motion is to listen to everyone that I have on my list, talk, and then make a decision after that. I want to continue.
Do we really need a vote to just continue doing what we're doing?
That's what I'm saying. I don't think I need a motion.
Your council policies say that meetings adjourn at 10 o'clock unless a motion is made.
10:30.
Yeah, but we very seldom, plus, I don't think I've ever adjourned to 10:30.
We've never followed that, and Cecil Leonard can attest to that.
1:00 in the morning, I'd love to know that. All right, well, motion's been made in second to continue. All those in favor?